He's doing good. Call to order, the Carver County Board of Commissioners, July 16th, 2019, regular session. We now join me as we pay our respects to the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is our public comment portion. We reserve five minutes for folks to address the board on an item not on the agenda. This is designed to educate the board so that they could hopefully make better decisions. So, we have anybody speak to us today?
Hi, my name is Karen Johnson-Lightner, 15735 38th Street, Mayor of Minnesota, and I am a relevant public watchdog. I am going to recap soon. These people have the actual copy, but I just want to go through, for the 14 years, there was chairs and vice-chairs. And I just want to recount, five times Ishi's been the chair, four times Degler, three times Maluschnik, two times Lynch, zero Workman out of 14 years. We got the vice-chair, five times Ishi, three times Degler, three times Maluschnik, two times Lynch, one time Delaney, zero for Mr. Workman. I think that's kind of concerning. I also got today, and I've given them, a list of 32 attorneys that are tied to the John Linder CUP, past and present, and I'm going to question why the attorneys eschects after sworn officers of the court. They can act like they had nothing to do with it, but as an attorney, many, many of them, 32 are on there, only two actually stood out and tried to help us. You were all given an email today, again, of a video with Dave Linder from Minnesota Broadcastings, Minnesota Hall of Fame, and at that point, he's bragging about how the tower was built to sell, and joking around and calling, not saying it's in Hollywood Township, but he called wackos and goons. That is another problem for when you finally do watch it, but you better watch it because of the fact it's evidence. We're going to go into another situation where these, so many things are happening without the taxpayers' knowledge, and it contendues, sort of like when they were lowering the tower from 659 feet to 320, which would have cost about $63,000. You took $35,000 away from Hollywood Township. It sounds like the past owner gave us money, and then it was taken away. And then there was another $35,000 taken from the sheriff, 2009 communication budget rolled over to 2010. It's just crazy what's going on here. And then I'm going back, and there was a sub-tower committee, and ownership by Hollywood Township, lots of things going on, Carver County was involved, they were going out to the Hollywood Township meeting. Three of the people that were on the committee were three people that put my husband and I on felony police reports. And then last but not least, but if you pull up this picture here, just to show this tower thing has just gotten to be out of control. In 2005, March 10th, 2005, there was a meeting out in Hollywood Township about getting a broadband on the radio tower. And the people that were most aggressive to get actually antennas on it, crazy enough, they got fiber optics afterwards, going all the ways, down, 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 up, down, and then to this guy's place, to his home. And I ask, why would stuff like this happen? It's a pattern, you're continuing it. And if you look at this map over here, way, way up in top, way in top, close to Wright County and McLeod County, that's where the tower ended up. So, I'll be back. Next time, health, and I've got experts.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board during public comments?
I do.
Hey, wait a minute, I'm going to reset my timer on this. All right, go.
Thank you. First off, I wanted to say how much I appreciate the ability to have an opinion today, because I know that that is something that I have in the past not been allowed to do here in Chaska. So, I just wanted to point out several things. As you know, I am like the resident ADA guru, and I just wanted to point out that, where was it here? According to Minnesota statute, no, that's not what I wanted. Sorry, Minnesota Rules, Chapter 1341, Point 303. There's a rule that prohibits vertical changes in the floor levels of greater than 1/4 inch and no more than 1/2 inch, and beveled pursuant to the rule. And I just wanted to point out that I don't know why cities and counties like always want to use these pavers, these like brick pavers, because every winter, they pop out, or they become like dysregulated, and nobody fixes them. And I just think that maybe somebody at some point should maybe make that a priority, because that is technically an ADA violation. The second thing I wanted to point out.
Noah, did you identify yourself, I think, and your address, please?
Hi, I'm Noah McCourt, and my address is, I don't know if I want to give my address, is 33 West Lake Street, McConia, Minnesota, 55387, Apartment 404. And the other point I wanted to make is I actually, everybody told me this was not a thing, but I actually went over there today. One of my friends is the ADA Director for the State of Minnesota's Council on Disability, and I actually borrowed his door pressure gouge to make my point in this. But Federal Rule 14.13.11 says that interior doors can't require more than five pounds of force to open. And those big oaken doors in the courthouse, I hate to break it to you, but those require more than five pounds of force to open. And then my final point today is that I have, I also love my Data Practices Act. And I just wanted to point out, because this has been like an issue like for a lot of people with me, but I'm just writing, I just wanted to say that as far as like data practices, I wanted to point out Minnesota Statute 13.03 subdivision 3, which states that the responsible authority or designee shall provide copies of public data upon request. If a person requests copies or electronic transmittal of the data, the responsible authority may require the requesting person to pay the actual costs of searching for and retrieving the government data, yada, yada, but they may not charge for separating public from private data. There is an exemption if it's 100 or fewer pages of black or white. And then there's also an exemption specifically if you are, if the only way for which to provide for inspection of data is printing off data. That's really like not my problem. And I hate to break it to people, but like I'm not willing to pay when like the county is simply, the county's data procedure is simply like not compliant with the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act, and we've been over this like several times. And then even in the event like you were able to charge me for some other reason, it's also been opined by the Commissioner of Administration in Opinion 94-059 that cities aren't allowed to consider sales tax in considering the actual costs of responding to data requests. And I've known, I've had one issue with the county and one issue with Chaska, where they've tried to charge me sales tax, and that's actually not allowable either. But anyways, that's all I had today. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Anyone else like to come before the board, speak during public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is review and adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have to delete 5.1, the settlement agreement for Highway 533 Roundabout Project.
All right, we will accept that motion with the noted deletion from Commissioner Degler and a second by Commissioner Workman then on that. So, is there any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that motion prevails. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for July 2nd, 2019, regular session. Is there a motion regarding that item?
A move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Degler, is there any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that motion prevails. Moving on to community announcements, item number four on the agenda, Commissioner Degler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to remind people that if you're coming to the courthouse, you might want to plan on a little extra time because Chaska is doing some street reconstruction, putting in curb and gutter and storm sewer and sanitary sewer. And Fourth Street, the main artery to get to the courthouse, is one of the streets that they're working on this year. The other thing I'd like to mention, another highway, County Highway 14, which is also called Pioneer Trail, is going to be some construction of right and left turn lanes at McKnight Road, and that's just west of 41. So, expect that, I think it starts Thursday or Friday. So, it's still, there will not be any detours, but you could expect some delays. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any commissioners, any other community announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. It is before you, is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
A move, Mr. Chair.
Move by Commissioner Ishi, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Workman, any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that motion prevails. We do have the consent agenda approved. Moving on to item number six, which under our strategic planning is connections, develop strong public relationships, and connect people to services. And Item 6.1 is our Minnesota County Intergovernment Trust Report to the Board. It's an annual event. And we participate with you folks for quite a long time. Calling up, oh, you're going to introduce him, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm Sonia Walter, the Risk Management Specialist in Employee Relations. And I have Paul Haydock here today from MCIT. Paul is Carver County's Risk Management Consultant, and he's going to provide you with our member report. Paul.
Great, thank you, Sonia. Thank you for all the work you do. I know you save our taxpayers money by what you folks do. It's not an easy job, and I know you're pretty good at what you do, so I hear that anyway. But go ahead, don't let me interrupt you anymore, okay?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for taking time on your busy agenda for the MCIT 2019 report to Carver County. We do this every other year to coincide with the election, to give any new commissioners or other elected officials an introduction to MCIT, and for everyone else to talk about what's happened in the recent past and what we expect for the coming year. Jane Henninger was the Risk Management Consultant prior to me, and she presented here previously. She's retired, and I've been at MCIT 19 months. As you may already know, MCIT is not an insurance company. We're a public joint powers entity dedicated to providing quality coverage and risk management services to our members. In the '70s, affordable coverage was scarce. Commissioners got together and said, if we pooled the money that we're sending to insurance companies, paid our own claims, and provided our own services, we could handle this exposure very well. They began with workers' compensation, and a couple of years later, added the property and the liability. The MCIT Board is made up of commissioners, administrators, and auditors, so they come from where you are, and they manage MCIT the way that you would. We cover 81 of the 87 counties and 381 other county-related entities like SWCDs and agricultural societies. I won't name all 81 that we cover, but the six that we do not, Anoka, Dakota, Hennepin-Ramsey, St. Louis, and Olmsted, all self-insure. In the front page of the report, in that pink section, "In 2019, we're celebrating 40 years of managing risks with our members." And Carver County joined in 1982, so you've been along for 37 of those years. Thank you very much for that long tenure as an MCIT member. The keys to this have been MCIT's dedication to addressing the changing needs of our members and members' willingness to reduce the frequency and severity of claims. In that pink box, we've got some bullet points, but I would add to that, it's the commitment members have to the program and to not viewing our services as a commodity. Down at the bottom, you can see the MCIT mission to provide quality coverage and risk management services to our members. And I'll say a little bit more about the services later. Flipping to the inside two pages, on the left-hand side, "MCIT is financially sound today and tomorrow." And the way that we do that is with actuarially derived rates based on the past and looking at members' exposures going out into the future. And those rates are meant to be smoothing, to take out the peaks and valleys, so that if you had a bad property claim in 2019, you would not expect your contribution to change dramatically in 2020 because of the pooling effect of all the members that are in the trust. And this should allow for better year-to-year budgeting for our members. If we look at the rates since 2010, aggregate rates for property casualty are down over 30% and for workers' compensation, over 32%. Looking a little closer, from 2015 on, rates are either flat or down. And that brings us to that green box at the bottom, everyone's favorite, the dividend. So, rates are prospective, they look out going forward, what are the exposures going forward? The dividends look at the claim history and our investment results, and see if there are funds that could be returned to members. And the board's goal in this process is to never have to come back to members and say, "We don't have enough money to run MCIT, we can't pay the claims that we have." They want to never do that. So, they're always looking, when they're setting rates, as making sure that that's never going to happen. But with that as a backdrop, they were able in 2018 to declare the 28th consecutive dividend, and it was just announced that the 29th consecutive dividend has been declared this year. So, last year's dividend was almost $12 million for the trust. You can see the Carver County portion there. But if we were a stock insurance company, those funds would be going to shareholders. But because we're a joint powers entity, they go back to our members and ultimately to the taxpayers. Looking in the middle section there, the white section with the graphs, we're looking here at claims for the trust as a whole, starting with the property casualty. And you can see that 61% of our claims are coming from auto, and that's everything from windshields to collisions. And then 32% of the dollars are coming from auto. And that makes some sense, we cover 9,000 vehicles statewide. But if we look back at the frequency chart, we can see that the public employees liability, which used to be called public officials liability, but because it covers all public employees as well, we changed the name, and law enforcement liability together, they're 9% of our claim frequency and 36% of the dollars. So, that's where we're getting some big claims out of those two categories. MCIT does not experience rate the property and casualty coverage, but all members' experience will affect the contributions going forward. We move on down to workers' compensation. Again, this is for the trust as a whole. The sheriff and jail operations and highway department together are 51% of our claims and 64% of the dollars. This makes sense because they're 24-hour operations, they're often doing hazardous things, so seeing workers' compensation claims out of those areas makes sense. And this is really why, back in the '70s, carriers didn't want to write county business. It was exposures like this that they didn't want. Now, the way that we address each individual member's experience with workers' compensation is a complex formula that develops the Workers' Compensation Experience Modification Factor, which is such a mouthful, we just refer to it as the MOD. This looks at the past frequency and severity of work-related illnesses and injuries, and the math on it is that every employee is put in a job class, and for every job class, there's a rate on payroll. So, your base contribution is the collected payroll in those classes times the rate. And then the actuary in that rate that they've developed for each payroll class has expected losses. And then they look at each member's losses compared to those expected losses. So, if your actual losses are less than the actuary expected, you have a modification factor of less than one. If they're poor, then it's greater than one. So, if we look at that red banner, you can see that for 2019, modification factor is just slightly more than one, but in the recent history that's listed below that, it has been below one. So, likely what happened, because this is a three-year rolling calculation, there was a bad claim or claims that drove the experience MOD over one, and when they worked their way through, if they were truly an anomaly, then you'll see your MOD go back down. But Carver also, in that second bullet, you can see, has, since 1992, assumed a high deductible of $50,000 per claim with a $350,000 annual aggregate. And the reason that Carver was able to do this is because you have a risk manager and the sophistication to take this on and reduce your contribution by actively participating in claims management. If we move then to that blue section on the right-hand side, the coverage enhancements for 2019. First is an area of emerging risk for us, the data compromise and CyberOne coverage. We introduced this coverage in 2017, we made some changes in 2018, and then in 2019, increased the limit for counties from $50,000 to $100,000 at no additional contribution. And also put in a process in place where members desiring a higher limit could go through an application process and get a higher limit, and Carver did that. Went through the process and purchased ultimately a million dollars of coverage with a $10,000 deductible this year. In builder's risk, the coverage on structures increased to $750,000 from $500,000 and on contents to $150,000 from $100,000 at no additional charge to members. Another area of emerging risk for us is drones, and this is good news. Previously, drones were only covered by MCIT for limited law enforcement uses, and now in 2019, any member use is covered. So, that could be GIS, Highway Ditch Authority Sheriff, it doesn't matter, it's covered. In the electronic data processing equipment coverage, we used to have a sublimit for equipment in transit or at non-member locations, and this often came up with voting equipment, if it was stored centrally and then moved to the precincts in an individual truck. You could have had more than that sublimit, or at an individual precinct, more than that sublimit, exposing you to an uncovered loss should something happen to it. We've done away with that totally now. So, as long as that equipment is on your inventory, wherever you have it, it's covered, whether it's in motion or stationary, and you don't have to tell us where it is, as long as it's on that list. In addition, software is covered, up to $100,000, and the sublimit for extra expense has been increased to $50,000. And then in coverage of liability for dams, previously, all liability from dams was excluded by MCIT, and for 2019, Class III dams are now covered. And those are the ones that are least likely to cause downstream damage. And our main point here is that the cyber coverage, the drone coverage, and dam coverage, those were all changed based on input from members. Members coming to us saying, "These are areas of concern for us, we need more coverage," and the board was able to provide that for them. And then on to the last page, we'll talk about the services. You have two consultants that are assigned to you by MCIT. The first is me, the Risk Management Consultant. I look at the coverage and liability and risk management concerns, review contracts and joint powers agreements from a risk management perspective, look at risks and provide advice on how to manage them, look at how the coverage document responds, or equally as important, may not respond to a given situation. And then Brian Doughty is your Loss Control Consultant. He works with Sonia and the Safety Committee in doing job hazard analysis and property surveys. And you can see the other things that Brian does in the bullet points there. But the important thing is that Brian and I are no additional contribution. So, you've already paid for our services, so if Brian's here with the Safety Committee or I'm doing a presentation, the meter's not running. So, you should feel free to use those services, they're there for you, and you've already paid for them. In the blue box on the left-hand side, some of our training for officials and employees. We do lots of seminars and workshops. The next seminar is on board meetings, on open meeting law, and data practices, and difficult constituents. That is going to be on August 8th at MCIT in St. Paul. We do onsite presentations for risk management and loss control. We have our Patrol, which is peace officer accredited training online. This is Minnesota-specific training developed by MCIT, LMCT, the Minnesota Sheriff's Association, and the Minnesota Police Chiefs Association. And you currently have 71 law enforcement personnel enrolled in Patrol. That's really excellent. Defensive drivers training is important. Obviously, with 61% of our claims coming from auto, this is an area of continuing concern. The particular defensive drivers training we're talking about is a two-hour course put on by the Minnesota Safety Council, and the instructors are retired state troopers. It's very, very well received, and we recommend that you have that training for employees every other year. The gray box in the middle are awareness and prevention materials. These award-winning resources have helped members save millions, and they are in written form, they're electronic, they can be emailed, there are YouTube videos and webinars. We try to present the information in any way that a person wants to take it in so that it's of use to them. All of those materials are available on our website, mcit.org. And then the Employee Assistance Program in the green box, the EAP is provided to all members at no additional contribution. It applies to all elected officials and all employees and all of their families. It's totally voluntary and confidential. We view it as a risk management tool, with the idea being that if someone isn't dealing with issues at work or at home, they're going to work better, more safely, not injure themselves or others, and not damage property. And in the smallest green box there in the middle, 46 employees indicated that using the EAP allowed them to avoid either filing a grievance or a claim. So, that's really the proof for us that this is a risk management tool. In the red banner there, you see the county's EAP participation level. We look for 4% to 5%, 4% to 5% tells us that we're reaching the audience we need to reach. Having a level above that certainly means that the word is out and people are using it. It's not a bad sign. It's good that people are taking advantage of the resource. We have materials that are focused on elected officials, law enforcement personnel, and employees in general, because they're slightly different audiences for the materials. And so, if there was ever a sense that you weren't reaching people or it needed to be refreshed, we could certainly do that. Brian can provide those materials, I can, or they're also available to order right from mcit.org. And again, they're electronic and posters and table tents, checkstuffers. However we can reach people, we want to reach them that way. And then we're often asked down there in that bottom section in the black, what can we as commissioners do to help continue to move the process forward? And supporting safety initiatives like the Safety Committee and a Return to Work Program for injured workers, attending risk management training, supporting and encouraging training for all employees, learning how coverage applies or maybe doesn't apply before making final decisions, having contracts reviewed for risk management before signing or approving them. This is an important one because we review a lot of contracts, and we'll see things in there that we know our members would rather not have in there, things that they would like to negotiate away. But too often, they're already signed, and it's very difficult to go back and fix those things. And even if you're in a situation where you aren't going to be able to negotiate that problem away, you would at least know what it is and sort of go into that with open eyes. And so, we recommend that you have that review done before signing, if at all possible. And then promoting safety at all levels, which, given your MOD history, you've obviously been doing, because that does not happen by itself. So, if you're not focused on safety, you would never have that MOD rate history that you have. So, you'd be commended for doing that and continuing to do it, because obviously what you expect, that's what the employees are going to do. That is the report. On behalf of the MCIT Board of Directors and your MCIT service team, thank you for your continued support of MCIT.
Thank you very much for your report, and very informative. So, Commissioners, any questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I know that early on, it's Mr. Haydock.
It's Haydock.
Haydock?
Yeah. It's rather difficult.
I want to call you what your name is. You mentioned open meeting law earlier. We had a community in Carver County kind of go through a wild bunch of open meeting law violations, et cetera. My summation of that is, is that Minnesota really doesn't have an open meeting law. I know it costs a lot of money in the process. I'm not asking you to zero in on open meeting law procedure here today, but it kind of balances on the three separate occurrences. And so, in other words, if the members of the Carver County Board were violating the open meeting law, we'd have to be prosecuted, found to be guilty, then do it again, prosecuted, found to be guilty, then do it again a third time, and be prosecuted before we could be removed. Now, that's going to probably cost us a lot of fines and MCIT probably a lot of money. I don't know what our limit is. League of Cities is $400,000, and they got to that fast. Maybe something to go back and maybe even guide us on what that is. I don't know that you're going to go back and say, "Yeah, we need to toughen this up so that we can, you know, throw Workman off the county board." But... But I see that as sort of a big, and I know that there's an effort underfoot at the legislature to perhaps tighten that up a little bit. So just a thought. And then the other thing, and I don't know where I was when I sent this to at least the county administrator. In Florida, Riviera Beach City Council paid $600,000 in ransom to hackers who took over their system. Because they took over their records and they weren't going to give them back, and they were encrypted. A city spokesman said that it's recommended that they pay the ransom, but that there were no guarantees that once the hackers receive the money, they will release the records. I don't know if you remember this little article I sent you today. To the hackers. And so that kind of frightened me a little bit. I'm assuming we have coverage for that, but I'm assuming that we maybe, and I think this county is doing a good job, and on their way to some security measures so that we don't have to go out and buy cryptocurrency to pay off, get our records back. Is that a thing these days?
Yes, it certainly is, and that's one of the reasons that we spent some time talking about the data compromise and Cyber One, and the fact that Carver alone among MCIT members that I'm aware of went through the process of applying for additional coverage, which they don't just give out. Obviously, you have to have procedures and systems in place to safeguard your data. So that's obviously been looked at by the underwriters. This is underwritten outside of MCIT by Hartford Steam Boilers, so their experts looked at the application and made the determination that they could provide higher limits than MCIT was providing in our regular coverage documents. So that speaks to the security measures being in place. And then if there was a claim, that coverage would respond, and those HSB experts would be there to walk through the process of what are the steps, what do you need to do, both to get your systems back, and if somebody is extorting, how you deal with that process. So there's, one of the things that that coverage has in it is, once you discover that there is a problem, you have 60 days to let us know in order to trigger coverage. If you wait beyond that, there's no coverage. And the reason for that is so that those experts that HSB has can help you through that process, and you're not going it alone.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? I've always said, Commissioner Workman, that the best way to fix the open meeting law is to make the legislature subject to it. And then they'd make the corrections that would make it work correctly. And we've had several, as Commissioner Workman is not one of them though, that we have several former legislators who are now county commissioners, and they don't understand how we get anything done under those rules, is what I was told by some of them. And I think you've had that conversation with them also, Commissioner Workman. All right, well, thank you so much. We appreciate it. We're a great partner. We just love working with you folks.
Thank you very much.
And keep up the good work for us, okay? I know our risk management people like working with you folks, so. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll see you another, every other year, right? So two years, we'll see you. Okay, good. All right, moving on to our next item. Under our strategic plan, it's the Communities Create and Maintain Safe, Healthy, and Livable Communities. Item 7.1, Award Construction Contract for Mental Health Wellness Center. And Nick's not here, but I know Jim's here, so that's good. How are you doing today? Let everybody know who you are and what you do, okay?
I'm Jim Kukumicer, Facilities Manager for Carver County. I'm doing wonderful today, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I just got to figure out the system here real quick.
All right, we got a moment or two. Not too long, Commissioner Ishi's getting hungry. I didn't bring him any cake, so I'm in trouble. Which is not unusual.
You should know better.
I should know better, he says. He's right. I should.
I think you're up and running, Jim.
Oh, there it is. Okay, good, thank you.
Who brought you cake?
So I am here today to discuss the mental wellness facility, the construction project the addition to, and I will get started here. So for the project overview, we acquired the property from Ridge Medical Center, and this provides residential crisis stabilization services. And allocated 1.25 million from state bond funds to expand and remodel the facility. We're going to expand it from five beds to 12 beds. Basically, it's a 2,700 square foot addition and associated little building improvements inside the existing facility as well. Here's kind of an overview of the map. Try to make this a little bigger for you. There we go. So basically, this will be the addition right here, this area right here. This is all existing. Construction bids, we did solicit single prime sealed bids of four, to be exact. We did receive four bids, open bids. We want to be completed with the project, hope to be completed with the project by the end of the year. We did open the bids on June 20th, right here in the boardroom, myself and John McNamara from Wold Architects.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Back one thing. You had single prime. What's single prime? I'm not familiar with that term.
How would you describe that, John?
Sealed bids, I know, but what's a single prime?
I'm Mr. Chair, Commissioner. Single prime sealed bid is from a single-source contractor, a general contractor is probably the best way to describe it. So that single prime carries all the subcontractor bids, so it's a complete price for the entire project.
Thank you. I just wasn't familiar with that term. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
John, why don't you let everybody know who you are for the record, so.
I'm John McNamara with Wold Architects and Engineers. Thank you.
This is the bid tabulation sheet that we put together from the bids we received. Base bid A is the residential addition or the extra rooms that'll be to be occupied. And then alternate one is the office suite additions. And then obviously, the total with alternate is there on the right side. This is the project budget that was constructed by Wold Architects. As you can see, we're right about where we want to be with the first bid from Eber Construction, which should leave us a little bit for additional furniture and needs that the new staff will need there at the building. And then for our recommendation from Carver County and from Wold Architects is to contract with Eber Construction, the expansion and remodeling of the mental wellness facility, including the base bid, work, and the alternate bid. One, you know, one pending finalization, the contact review process, and the updated project budget. And authorize the Assistant County Administrator to approve change orders that are within the overall project budget.
All right. Any questions for Jim or John? Members?
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Ishi on the motion, Commissioner Degler on the second. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion prevails. Thank you very much, Jim, for stepping in for Nick. John, always good to see you. Thank you for your good work, as always. All right, sir?
Yep, thank you.
You bet. Very good. Moving on to our next item, item number eight is under our strategic plan for culture, provide organizational culture, fostering accountability to achieve goal, and sustain trust and confidence in county government. It's item 8.1, County Administrators 2019 Midyear Performance Evaluation Summary. And I get to do that one today. All I got to do is find the right page, and we'll be in good shape here. Let's see. Here we go. As provided by Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A, the county board met with County Administrator David Hemsey on July 2nd, 2019, in a closed session to evaluate and discuss his 2019 performance as of the mid-year point. The summary of our evaluation is as follows. Mr. Hemsey has made significant progress with regard to the predetermined goals during the initial half-year of 2019. The county board is comfortable with Mr. Hemsey's overall performance, as well as his progress towards meeting goals established for this year. Motion would be in order to approve the summary statement of the County Administrator Hemsey's 2019 Midyear Performance Evaluation. Do I have a motion in effect?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion prevails. We are at the point of adjournment.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I got a motion from Commissioner Lynch to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Degler. It's non-debatable. We'll take the vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks. Excellent work.